I've been meeting with the state on Monday where they're going to review the notes from our first clinic and they may change some of the times and/or the protocols that we use based on how our clinic went. And so if they change those times then, you know, unfortunately we'll be spending time shipping out everybody's new time to come in and get their second vaccination. So that has been an amazing process and has taken a significant amount of our time to pull off. But what a wonderful thing for our staff and our, and our community. So I just wanted to give a shout out there. And then next, of course, we had to, for the first time since we opened school in September, did something that broke our hearts, huh Sean? And that was, not that the junior senior high didn't break our hearts, it always breaks our hearts. But we had to pivot. And, you know, and that was challenging because of course now we're talking to our little people. And, you know, they can't stay at home independently. So we did, you know, work with our rec department to try to provide options for parents and collaborate with them. They've been wonderful to work with this year on so many different levels, offering our, you know, our co-curricular virtual program this year, which is called Winter Warmups to the Community. Every time we have gone on remote for plans, they have offered families a, an option to be able to have their kiddos go there if they, if they needed to have a safe place for them to go and learn. And so, you know, just really want to thank Amy and the rec department for working with us during this pivot. And I also want to give a shout out to Sean, Debbie and Christina who have worked in all kinds of different ways to, to make this work. I mean, every weekend, I don't know that people realize, you know, it's very stressful when these situations arise. And, you know, we, we spend hours going through every detail to see if there's any way, shape or form to do that before we finally have to acknowledge for ourselves that, that sometimes you just can't control everything in the world and, and that you have to, to make those kinds of decisions. So as, as hard as it is, you know, that's kind of what our job is, right? To make those hard decisions and provide that level of leadership. And I want to, you know, thank Dave Hughes here tonight and Sean and my administrative team for all of their efforts this year. My team has given up holidays, weekends, vacations. They've done literally everything humanly possible to keep three models of education going for the community. And to provide as much as we can, not as little as we can, for families, students and staff. And with them here tonight, I just wanted to acknowledge them publicly. And from the bottom of my heart, I thank you very much for all that you do for the kids, families and students here.
Thank you all very, very much.
On that note, we are planning on opening at the elementary school on Monday. It looks like all, all is good. We had a little scare the other night that we might have to close the junior senior high, but we're, we're still looking good there. Another positive, you know, thing on our horizon is that with the vaccinations, we offered them to some of our substitutes or all of our substitutes that were with us last year, who would not return under pandemic conditions. Most of them retired teachers who did not feel safe and comfortable coming in. And we are absolutely thrilled that a number of them did take advantage of our clinic and have committed that they would be able to return and provide us with substitute coverage after the April vacation break. In addition, a number of our teachers who were on mediated accommodations and could not come in. So they are remote teaching while at the same time we have coverage here for the kids that are in the building are also working with their physicians to see if they can't get permission to return April, April vacation. What that means is that our capacity to be able to stay open increases dramatically. And so, you know, I would just wanted to share that publicly that although we had this little unfortunate situation at the elementary school that things are looking up. It looks like we'll be able to keep both schools open until April. Now, we don't have control over this, you know, we don't have control, but we still feel fairly optimistic that, that, that we'll be able to, to pull things together and keep things going for the rest of the year. So let's all keep our fingers crossed. We thought we were over that hump when the clinic started, so we were devastated to have to close. So I just, those are the two items I, I wanted to share with you tonight as we opened our meeting.
Susan, one thing this just came to me when you were talking is the whole task force that you were still started, that's going to start tomorrow.
Yes, so the task force starts tomorrow. It has, we have three parents representing each of the levels of, of our school. We have an elementary parent, we have a middle school and a, a high school parent. We have, so myself obviously, Jamie Hayes is going to represent the junior senior high administration. Sean's on that, representing the, the elementary school and the principal's perspective. We have one student, Zoe McGurk, who's, who's serving on that. Kim is representing the board. And who am I, oh, three teachers, one at each level. We have both the nurses, one, and we have a teacher at the middle school and I'm missing somebody.
Paraprofessional.
Paraprofessional, and we have one paraprofessional. So we're meeting tomorrow and as you know, we agreed and have promised and kept this promise to all of our students and our staff and our parents that we would follow the highest standards of safety for in-person learning and we have kept to that. At the time, of course, vaccines on the horizon. And now that we have vaccines, what we want to do is to bring people together and we're not changing the MOA. That's not the purpose of it, but in fact, it's, it's to try to refine what do we mean and what applies under these conditions now because the conditions are different than what they were before.
Susan, walk me through the concept of the MOA.
The concept of it?
Yes.
So.
Is, is that separate from their teacher contract or their paraprofessional contract?
They're, they're a supplement to it.
Supplement, an addendum, so to speak.
Yes, so when you have unusual conditions like this that alter the terms and conditions that you've agreed to in the contract, one of the ways that you address that is through negotiating a memorandum of agreement with your employee group. So it's, it's kind of like, under these circumstances, we're going to alter aspects of our employee contract and/or the conditions under which we're going to work are so different, we need to have a conversation about our working conditions and what that will look like. So everybody knows and, you know, it's, it's hard to believe at this point, but, you know, we open our schools, you know, without really much in the way of kerfuffles, right? I mean, we were all on board. And one of the reasons why is because we collaborated with parents and members of our community, the administration, the teachers, paraprofessionals, students, all got together over the summer and worked through a lot of these challenges. And as a result, we were able to open school and offer two models of learning, which then turned out to be three, to our community. When we did that and based on all the input that we got and every, every challenge that we faced, we tried to address that. And much of that is documented on the website in our plans. We had three iterations of that, you know, that got deeper and deeper into the details of who we went along. And then we negotiated contracts with our employees to kind of cement what we had agreed to verbally and would, would guide us in, in how we approached what we did throughout the year. So, so those agreements have, have held strong. And I think one of the things, you know, I was writing to a parent today, you know, who was, who wanted us to, you know, modify some of that. And I explained to them that, you know, some of this might to some people sound silly. Why are you doing, you know, X, Y or Z? And in each and every case, it's because that there was a, a, a need that was expressed to us that we tried to address. So, you know, sometimes we're afraid. And I might not be afraid of the same things you're afraid of. But if, 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 if your employees come to you and say, what really, really we find upsetting and creates anxiety for us is X, Y and Z. But if you can address this, then we'll feel comfortable coming in. We'll take that risk, you know, because we care deeply about kids in this community. Then you want to try to do that. And so that's why we went with the highest standard because at the time, if you remember, there was the science, science and safety was our highest priority. And we, we all decided that no matter what we did, that that was going to guide what we, what we did. We were not going to compromise people's safety, no matter what. And so, you know, what happened is that we started to see some schools around us couldn't overcome some of the challenges. And so politics started to guide the guidelines that were being proposed and presented at, it's, you know, at the state levels and sometimes nationally. And, and so that standard was to ensure that if politics started to erode the level of protocol and guidance, that we would always follow whatever that highest standard was.
So when you, when you all met with the unions and discussed their contracts and discussed the concerns about COVID and getting back to. All of these things were discussed, obviously, I'm assuming in great detail.
Yes, okay.
And they were teacher representatives on all the committee's as well.
And some of the frustration, I think, back when we were negotiating or discussing all these things and even negotiating, is there really was no good guidance.
Right.
Things were changing so quickly, federal government and the state government weren't really providing guidance. But I think now things have pivoted a lot and we've, we've gotten good guidance. There's a couple of new, new guidelines that have come out from the CDC as well as from the DHHS that give, in fact, there's a 55-page document from the CDC on school opening, school operational strategy. So I think now there's the science and the guidelines are there and have been provided to us. And I guess I'm not entirely sure why we necessarily need a task force. In the summer, we absolutely did and I think it was a fantastic idea. Everybody got together, we were able to kind of piece part and pull what we thought was the best and the highest standards we could figure out. But at this point, how do we define highest standards if it's not the CDC or the WHO?
I think it's, it's exactly to that point. It's to make sure that everybody understands exactly what we're talking about tonight. And we get clarity and refinement around that. So it's not the highest standard and we're all digging through different things. So when the governor says, this is what we're doing here, but that's not the highest standard, that it stops some of the confusion that people have. I mean, some of the emails that I've, I've received, you know, are, you know, well, New Hampshire says this and why aren't we doing that? And it's, and it's really to bring a level of understanding and then, and be clear about what is safe, you know? Not just, not just for parents, but also for our staff, you know? They're pretty comfortable now. They know that we are going to follow really high standards and these standards have kept them from exposure within our buildings. And we still have people that say, you know, I'm, you know, I'm nervous, you know, I'm nervous. And so we want to keep, we want to keep anxiety low. Other things, you know, Kim, Kim sent to me just before the meeting that the governor, I guess, announced, and I was in a meeting this morning. The governor announced, I guess, we're all supposed to go to five days a week. And we're supposed to do this by next week, I think it is, or two weeks, or whatever the heck it is. Without any kind of ramp up time. Now, for schools that were remote and have never been in session, you know, in some ways, I can see how perhaps they've been working on plans for how to do this. We've been doing this all year. And to have us come back five days a week means that we have to literally redo everything we're doing. So how does that impact us? Well, instead of working on putting together a fabulous graduation and this plan that we put together to present to you, you know, and going through the hiring process for all the people, we will have to kind of cease and desist everything that we're doing in order to meet that requirement. If that is the way that our town feels, you know, that we need to change for, by the way, five or six weeks' worth of education. It will be incredibly disruptive to kids, to families, and certainly it's going to shut down this administration from doing anything else between now and, and probably, you know, the next month or so, which is critical because we should be in the middle of gearing up hiring and other things that we just, we won't be able to focus our attention on. So I, I find it very disheartening over and over again that just before February break, you know, the governor just, you know, announced, you know, executive order 85, that we couldn't go to remote and all kinds of other things. And he had to go back with no ramp up time and no conversation, by the way, no conversation. and he had to go back with no ramp-up time, and no conversation, by the way. No conversation. I was just on the phone call with the commissioner two days ago, and absolutely nothing said about this. So I, you can tell I'm a little bit upset, having read that just a few minutes before, because it's not about what's good for kids always, you know? I, if we have followed the guidelines, the safety guidelines, the CDC guidelines, or just the CDC guidelines, and opened school for five days, and be able to provide staff with planning time and all of that, well, we would have done that this summer, right?
Well, I mean, in fairness, the CDC guidelines weren't out in the summer, but.
No, I'm just, I'm saying the current ones, if we could have done that, you know?
So when he made the announcement today, it wasn't, again, there was no, this is how I want you to go about it. Technically, we are open five days a week.
We are, because all of the time that we have for planning is is squeezed out of Monday through Thursday. And that's what I'm saying about the thoughtlessness.
Right.
We're providing the instructional time. We meet the time on learning requirements with what we're doing now. And I get other people, they have not had their kids in, and they, you know, should do everything they can to get them back. But I'm just saying, it's it's it's, you know, it's just not thoughtful policy. And there are people in school districts that have been in session that are, that are, you know, doing really, you know, amazing stuff with kids under these circumstances, and.
And then does, and again, asking some questions that, you know, so when we enter into contracts with teachers, and then we work on any addendums to the contract, if if we need to or are able to shift to five days in-school learning, what kind of timeframe would it take for us to have that discussion with the unions on how to facilitate that?
Well, let me just give you an example of the complexity. We would have to redo the entire master schedule at the high school. At the same time, we're trying to gear up for the program of studies so that we can get kids to register for classes for next year. So you can't really do both at the same time. It's one or the other, right? But just to do the master schedule, I don't know. If you devoted no other time, Dave, what, five, six weeks to to completely stem to stern?
I mean, you know, we don't sleep at all. Three weeks, probably, three and a half more, but it's it's involved.
And that's just one aspect. That's not even, then, once you have the plan, in other words, your plan, and that's just one piece of it, then you have to sit down with the teachers and talk about, okay, how does this impact what you're doing? Because we, it's not like we can open in a traditional way. We don't have herd immunity. Kids are not vaccinated right now, you know, and so we still have to follow the safety protocols. So, you know, we have to then sit down and negotiate. By the time we could do all of that, the school year's gonna be over.
It could take weeks.
Weeks, weeks.
And at the end of the day, it's an interruption of learning. At the end of the day, how does this impact our kids? That's the first thing. By doing any of this, how does this impact the kids? We answer that. Okay, now how does this impact our teachers? And you, you are, you're looking at weeks. Then we say to Dave, okay, Dave, go do this, get them all back in. Everything stops. Does anybody remember the year we didn't have a master schedule? Like, that was horrible. So we would be working all summer long again. There's so many repercussions. I'll talk, I'll say it, I don't care, fire me. So you, so then we have our staff working all summer long. Then they don't take their vacations. Then they're burnt out, and they leave their job. We end up paying them. We abuse our staff so badly that we end up giving up money when they leave this this administration. We have to take care of our staff. We have to take care of our students. We have to stop. It's a global pandemic. Let's take care of each other right now. And maybe we can get through the next two months. It's just been very difficult for every student, every family. And when we hear that maybe we could go back five days a week, that's really exciting, you know, for everyone.
Yeah.
But as I'm going through the layers, I mean, this is a matter of, you know, open up the door.
Right.
It's really complex, and I'm hearing that it's gonna take some time, if I'm hearing correctly, that it's gonna take some time. It's not just a turn the lights on on Friday and everyone show up for AP math.
It isn't, because right now, our schedules are set up, because it's, it is deep. So I'll just give you a couple of snippets. In order for us to go back to a normal schedule, let's say, pretend that we didn't have to follow safety. First of all, we can't use our common areas, because we removed all the furniture out of our classrooms, and they're stored in our cafeterias. Okay? So we, just to have the kids be able to, so teachers could have a lunch break, right, to be able to use that space, we have to empty the space out. So where are we gonna put it? And and what time are we gonna allocate to going through? And are we putting that back in the classrooms? Well, we still have to maintain social distancing. So it, there's ripple effects on every level for being able to un, it's kind of step back to where we were. It took literally months for us to get things in a, in a place where we could do what we're doing now. And we have to be able to step back from that.
Can I interject just for a second? I think it's pretty clear that going back five days is not gonna be possible. I just wonder if you could just bring the topic back a little bit to the task force. Are there gonna be any mental health professionals or special ed professionals on the task force?
There's three teachers on there. So the two nurses, who are obviously all about health and
Yeah.
whether it's mental health or physical health, they're they're representing on the two buildings.
I know you have a school psychologist and guidance counselor. I just didn't know if they would be useful to contribute.
Well, I mean, we could make the the group rather large, right, by including many, many more people. But we would like to be able to make a recommendation
Yeah.
back to the board by the 15th. So keeping the group, you know, to a manageable size where we can get some work done was was the idea. So we set up the task force ahead of time.
And that's gonna include, it's gonna include recommendations for April vacation, visiting colleges, a few other things. Is there gonna be any discussion about ending your field trips? I assume that this wouldn't happen, but maybe something worth discussing.
We'll start, we'll start our meeting tomorrow, you know, adding to, I had given a list of things that I've heard people talk about, and I'm sure the people on the group will have heard other, other things, and we'll make a list of the types of things that, you know, people wanna engage in. So it's not exhaustive.
So the task force is going to meet, and then they're, you all are going to bring us a recommendation?
On the 15th.
On the 15th, which is only a week before April school vacation week. That's tight. I mean.
Well, I don't know when else we would do it if we're starting tomorrow.
How many days do we need to have the task force meet?
It depends on how many topics we're gonna try to cover.
Could we speed that up?
Or maybe do an emergency meeting next week for real, after April?
I'm, I'm not sure. I think we should see what the task force could do. And I think that as of this moment, right now, the, the situation as it is, when we voted in October, is that the Monday after April vacation, school is gonna be open. That is the decision that we made, when we decided to only look at Thanksgiving, December, and February. So in my mind, and in in my personal choice as a family, I know that that means that we need to be available and ready to go to school that Monday after break. There has not been anything else said, to the contrary, in anything that I've seen or.
So reading between the lines, don't travel if you wanna go to school and.
I, I can only say what the policy is. I mean, people.
Well, I mean, that's the policy, so that's.
That's, that.
Just to be clear to everybody, that's all, so that people know.
That's the choice that I am making for my family.
And I'm, I'm doing the same, but I just wanna make sure we're being clear to this public.
But just, because there's been all sorts of scuttlebutt about who said what and what said he.
Well, that's why, yeah, we need to be honest, open, not honest, but direct.
Right. I mean, I mean, I think I'm speaking directly now, because that's the policy that I'm saying.
Well, being, being available. I just want people to be very clear. If you go, right now, as it stands, if you go away, you need to quarantine, and you wouldn't be at school, so.
Currently, if you travel outside of the New England states, then when you come back, you must quarantine for 10 days?
14 days.
14 days is the highest standard.
Okay, so that's what the task force is gonna discuss and go over. If there's any possible way that we could speed that up, you know?
I honestly think that is, that is about as sped up as you can do.
Okay. Okay.
Well, I mean, what if.
I mean, certainly, if 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 it's not that big of a deal, and we get it done, we'll certainly call an emergency meeting. I just.
Yeah, I mean, if there's a way to speed it up, we will definitely speed it up. But I think that the plan that right now should be to prepare for 15, does that happen?
It's one week and probably three or four meetings, and we have to schedule within that time to work through this. That's, I'm not available every day to, never mind 11 people all being available every single day to do it, but.
I mean, the board could decide to waive that policy or change our policy right now.
Well, you can't, because you have to have, the teachers' unions are gonna, potentially are gonna have to agree to it. So we come to whatever the plan is, then then it has to be presented back to the the unions, potentially. I don't know what what we're gonna land on.
Yeah, because the term highest standard is hard to define.
Exactly. It's gonna have to be something that.
Which at the time made sense, because we didn't know what was going on.
Exactly. So I mean, to do, to go through all the steps.
Everything has moved so fast in the last 30 days.
I know.
It's very disheartening for everyone involved.
It is.
It's difficult, and everyone wants it to be over.
Yeah.
We're done. We're over.
And there has been an uptick of COVID, too. People need to bear that in mind.
And everyone, but I appreciate the task force. I'm glad that we're at least getting some parents and teachers involved in these processes. That's how we're gonna get, move forward.
Yeah.
Okay.
And and I think the thing, too, and I said this to the superintendent in Epping as he was fretting over, you know, some, some things, and I said, you know, really, this is a wonderful thing. Vaccines are here. And yes, it 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 gives us hope for all kinds of things that we can start to do moving forward. We just have to have a little bit more patience. We're almost there. We're almost there. I mean, around us is, you know, we see opening up, and masks aren't there. And when you look at those areas, you know, we're starting to increase the number of cases. And so we just need to be, just hang on, everyone, just, just a little bit longer. We're almost there, you know, like I said. And I don't want to lose sight of some of the, some of the positive ways that this is influencing what we can do. The fact that we can stay open because we get substitutes back kind of gets lost in the conversation, you know? And and these things are huge. And what we have here prepared to hopefully review with you tonight is, you know, really exciting stuff, in ways that, you know, we're, we're gonna improve things for our children. And hopefully, we can stay the course, and the community will support us and understand that, you know, everything has trade-offs, you know, everything does, that we do. If we go to five days a week, then then it trades off our ability to to do this improvement plan, you know? If if we wanna improve things and get everything in really good shape so we have an awesome year next year, then we, we spend our time planning on that. And we just, we just hold on just a little bit longer, you know, just a little bit longer. We're gonna get there. I'm sorry, I know that that we went on.
Is there anything else, Susan, that you have?
No, no, no.
Any committee reports? I don't think there would be. Taylor's not here, so just to piggyback a little bit on it before you guys come up, I just want to thank Susan, Dave Dalton, high school principal, Sean Pine, and yes, Deb Black, assistant superintendent, and Eric McNeil, student services director, for all that you guys have done beyond, before this year, but especially in this last year, to allow us to have been open more than any district that I've seen around. You guys have worked long hours, dedicated, and it goes down to the teachers as well. I mean, we, we are fortunate to have people who are willing to give their all, the best for the students. So thank you for that, and I look forward to this presentation tonight, and give the floor over to you guys.
Yeah. So just, just to queue this up, and I'll turn it over to my team. We have, we work very collaboratively as an educational profession, professional group. Our, our team here works with the leadership of the teachers' union to problem solve. We meet regularly with them. And this academic improvement and learning loss plan was developed collaboratively with our educational professionals. And we meet, as I said, their leadership, you know, Dave and Sean and I and Deb, we meet every, actually, some weeks, we were meeting every week, to come together and brainstorm, not only, but then what's practical, and what can we actually execute on and do well? And so this is, this is really a culmination of a lot of work, much of which has been championed by Deb. Well, we handle a lot of the, you know, operational pieces to keep us safe from COVID. We've tried to block so that Deb can, can, you know, focus her attention on addressing some of our academic needs. So I, just, just for the new members of the board, we have an assistant superintendent, her, you know, huge focus area is curriculum and instruction. And we have teacher coordinators. And she works with both the administration and the teacher coordinators to engage in conversations about how we can improve teaching and learning, you know, to engage in dialogue about our curriculum, and to work with them to, to come up with strategies that they feel make sense, both horizontally as well as vertically. So, you know, big shout-out to Deb. She's done a huge lift here. And I'll turn the mic over to her to share with you some of our work that has been taking place over the last few months.
I'm just, sure, it looks like he's taking care of it. Great, thank you. I just want, on behalf of our, our leadership, Dr. Givens team, welcome all of our board members and all the staff, the rest of you, we recognize just how heavy a lift this has been for you as well. It was a really hard time, and the work you're doing is so important, and, and we really, we really appreciate you. So Dr. Givens, as she mentioned, just wants us to kind of give you an update on where we are with our learning loss and, and academic improvement. Just to set the context, especially for those of you who are just joining us, you know, it is, when, when you look at education as a whole, and you look at instructional practice and the most critical and important things in schools, it's absolutely imperative that school districts have articulated curriculum that's maintained and adapted and changed routinely. Also, that it's articulated in a vertical fashion so that you've got an alignment from one grade to the next, and you've got coherence. And that, in our state, we've been developing competencies, which kind of defines how, how kids will demonstrate whether or not they've done the learning. And you really need to have quality assessments that are aligned as well, so that you can make determinations about how the learning is going. And in order to keep all of this going, you have to have robust and sustained professional development for your, for your staff. Absolutely critical. So as we've mentioned before, and, and for those of you who are new, I joined this team in August. Dave came on in July, I believe, Dave? Is that right around there?
Right around there.
So, yes. So we're, we're, so we're neophytes, we're fairly new, new to this, to the system. But one of the things that I recognized very quickly is that one of the most critical needs for us has been curriculum. As I mentioned in the past, about 15 years ago, the state of New Hampshire adopted the, the Common Core standards, which we refer to as the New Hampshire College of Career Readiness Standards. And I know that groups of people have worked very hard in this district, but we had not ever gotten to a place where we had an articulated curriculum. We also recognize that for us, a critical area in need of improvement is mathematics. It's an area where, where we are underperforming and, and really need to put some attention. We also would really like to increase our proficiency in English language arts. We also are facing our NEAS accreditation, which is upcoming, and we never wanna lose that. And in order to retain it, we have to have a curriculum that is articulated in a common format at our, at the secondary, at the high school level. We also have recognized that we really lack core instructional programs, and we'll talk about that a little bit as we move forward. We wanna make sure we're defining competencies for all of our courses, and that we're developing these assessments. And also, at the same time, while we're trying to do this work, we really do have to be considering how we're going to address any loss of learning as a result of this pandemic. We know that we've had these shifts to remote learning. We've done a great job, but it has affected the way kids are receiving instructions. And it, and for some kids, it's been great, and for others, you know, it's been a struggle. So we wanna make sure that we're taking care of those things while also making sure that we're addressing the needs of our staff. So this evening, we're gonna talk just a little bit about where we are with having, with delivering curriculum to teachers, talk a little bit about what we've done in regard to prioritizing math standards. We're gonna review, talk about. We're gonna review, talk about right now, the process that we're in involving reviewing some core math programs that we could look to implement in the district. We're gonna talk a little bit about our summer learning plan. Principal Dalton and Principal Pine will talk to you about what that's going to look like in their respective schools. And our Director of Student Services, Erica McNeil, is gonna talk to you about an early intervention. That is, as we look at, at bringing in our, our kids, you know, into the school as early as possible and getting that support to them, that's very critical, as, as early as possible. And then we're going to talk to you just about some proposals for professional development and remote learning for next year. So the last time we were here, we had some conversations and we talked about math. And at that time, I shared with you that there's an organization, the national organization, it's, it's called Achieve the Core. And it is through, it's, it's funded by the State Council, or the Chief, the Council of State School Officers. And, and in that group, they have curriculum people as essentially a think tank. And they came together in light of what was happening with the pandemic. And they looked at, in the area of mathematics, what were the most critical math standards at each, each grade level that students needed to, needed to have? Because it's critical when you go from one grade level to the next. Math is very scaffolded. And so what is the, what are the really priority standards that you need to learn, you know, in, in eighth, seventh grade or eighth grade to be ready for algebra? So we needed to make sure that we identified what those standards were. And that meant that there were some that we could let go, some that weren't of the highest priority or some that we could spend less time on. We identified those. Math also has fluencies. So we identified the most critical math fluencies and the most critical math practices, which is, which really involve problem solving, how to use math. And we, there are eight primary practices. So having everybody focus on all of those when you're not in person would have been a great challenge. So it was, you know, what, based on the type of math that needs that we were learning at that point, what are the pri- primary practices? So we did that. In order to achieve that, I went through and provided curriculum documents for every grade level for mathematics and then for the secondary level. And we met as teams and we went through those priority standards and talked about the need for, from, you know, January, when we got back after the winter break to the end of the year, to make sure that we were prioritizing instruction in those, in those standards. And that's some of the work that we, that took place. Additionally, under normal circumstances, as, as we've talked about as well in the past, we would want teachers to develop curriculum together. But it's an intensive process. It requires a lot of professional development and a tremendous amount of release time. It's a lot of time for teachers to engage in the work. And teachers shared with me, they don't have the bandwidth for this. And let's be honest, it isn't really necessary. We can deliver curriculum documents to them and then make adjustments and adapt them to meet our needs. And so that's what we have done. So I have, I created a Google Drive and put in each, for each grade level at the elementary. They have ELA, or English Language Arts, Mathematics, Social Studies and Science. We have Music, Art, Physical Education. We have ICT and we've got help. So every, everything at the elementary level that teachers would need, they have. And at the secondary level, the vast majority of courses were provided. I will say at the secondary level, we do have a lot of teachers that have spent a lot of time writing their courses, and they, they did have course curriculum for those. But if, if they did not, this was something that, that we've given them as a tool because there's nothing scarier or harder for a teacher than to walk into a classroom and not, not know what they're supposed to teach, not have, have anything identified.
Sorry to interrupt, but.
Yeah.
That's fantastic to hear that that's already been done. That's really great.
So just so you get a sense of what these documents look like, essentially, what they do is they define what the standards are in units of study. For example, in the level, each, each elementary grade level has four units. And so it identifies the standards. It identifies basically what kids will know and be able to do by the end of that school year. So in addition to that, in having these initial conversations with teachers around the math curriculum and around where we were with mathematics, they shared with me that they had really no tools or resources to teach math. The last time that this district had a math program was Everyday Math. That was purchased well before we even moved into the, the Common Core standards or the, the College and Career Writing Standards. Teachers in general were, you know, using whatever they could find. A lot of them shared with me that they were spending money out of their own pockets through teachers pay teachers, which really does not create any type of coherence or, or, you know, or, or quality of pedagogy. It's, it's just, we never want to operate that way. So they were very excited about the possibility of starting to look at some core programs. So I went through and evaluate, and look at the, looked at the evaluations of, of all the, the programs that are currently available on the market and identified basically really the top four or five at the elementary and then at the secondary level. And on the Teachers Fridays, you know, those are our professional development days. That's when, when they have time to do some of this work. They have been participating in presentations by their, by the, the publishers teams. They've all been virtual, but they have, they've shared the resources, the tools, how the framework of the lesson, the structures of the lessons, what the assessments look like, the online platforms. They've, they've gotten to see all of those things. And in addition to that, they've had hard copies of, of many of the materials, but they've had complete access, digital access to all of these programs to use and try any of the materials that are associated. At the elementary level, we looked at, we've looked at illustrative math through Kendall Hunt, the Bridges Program, and Vision, which is, you may not be, probably not familiar, but Pearson is a giant juggernaut in the education field, and then, and Eureka. Two of those programs, actually, they came from open source materials. So years and years ago, they had funds, you might recall, they, they called the Greats to the Top. And states that got that funding, they were charged with developing curriculum for, that was aligned to the core. Result, in order to receive that money, they had agreed to make that public and share that out with the rest of the country. So Eureka was part of Engage New York, and I believe Kendall Hunt was, came out of Arizona, University of Arizona, I believe. But at any rate, these are all very highly rated programs. And they really focus on, when they rate them, you know, focus and coherence, rigor and mathematic practice, alignment and usability because the teachers, the teachers need to be able to see this and get their hands on it. They can see how, you know, these, these materials are gonna work well for me in my classroom. At the secondary level, we've looked at four programs. We looked at Eureka Math, again. We looked at illustrative, which is the secondary version of this, of the illustrative math. We looked at, at the middle school, Open Up Math. It's also based on the illustrative curriculum. And then we looked at Carnegie Learning, which comes from Carnegie Mellon University, and it's the, it's a true blended math program. We looked at that because it has, it allows students to go in and then have adaptive math. So as they're working, if they're struggling, it gives them hints, it gives them other lessons. It offers them support within, within the blended learning program. So where we are right now with that is that elementary and the secondary levels have narrowed the field at the secondary to two programs. The elementary is still looking at sort of a three, two and a half maybe. But right now, they're all in the stage of trying lessons, trying out the materials, working with them to see which ones feel like a great fit for them. It's our goal to hopefully bring a program to you before the end of the school year. And we're hoping that we're able to use some of the resources that have come as a result of some of our grant funding, hopefully to support some of this. So moving on, I'm going to pass the torch to Mr. Pine. And he'll talk to you a little bit about the summer learning loss program at the elementary school.
Good evening. It's good to see people again. One day we'll be well without masks. Thank you. I just kind of wanted to give you a brief overview of a summer learning loss program that we are gonna be running in this summer for, in June. And the idea is, is that we all know that because of the pandemic and, you know, not only this year, but in the year past, the kids have not necessarily had the opportunity to get a lot of solid, get their, their instructional concepts and, and curriculum. So we're, we're proposing a, a summer learning loss program. Would be offering it for two weeks, would be immediately, the two weeks immediately after school gets up. So the last two weeks of June to July first. The rationale behind that was is that, one is the kids are still in that kind of mode of coming to school. Two is many of the summer camps in the area don't start until after July fourth, so availability is gonna be there. Plus it also maybe helps parents in a pinch as well in covering those two weeks. But, so we thought that'd be, and also, it's also, those two weeks, we thought would have more interest in, in our, our core teachers being available for that instead of having to look to hire out. All certified teachers are, are gonna be working this program, along with some paraprofessionals if, if the, if the population warms up. So basically, it's an in-person program. It's for eight days. You can see on your handout there, proposed schedule would be, and again, this is just kind of a rough idea, that the kids would arrive at eight o'clock, you know, to eight thirty, and you see it's a, they would have an opportunity for social emotional learning as well. We're gonna have our, our guidance counselor there if she was interested in participating in the program. Could be a continental grab and go type thing. Then kids would transition to English Language Arts. And we're setting times in particular, so English Language Arts, Reading and Writing. We're setting times that English and Language Arts or math, they're gonna have set times in the schedule. And the reason for that is, is because we realized that the kids that we're gonna look to invite to this program may not have to be there for the entire day unless their parents opt, opt to have them there. So, so you see, like, eight thirty to ten, an hour and a half, English Language Arts. We broke in a, built in a break time for about a half an hour. You know, elementary kids gotta get up and move, and you know, that'll be part of the instruction, but they need that time to get the wiggles out, so to speak. And that would also be a time for snack, but it'd also be a transition time too. So that may mean that I'm only there for English Language Arts. I don't need to be for math because my math skills are very solid. That's my time. I'm gonna go home. And the kids would arrive at that time as well for the mathematic instruction. So, you know, we will be using that break and transition time, and then we'll transition into mathematics. And that runs from ten thirty to twelve. At twelve o'clock today, we're looking to have the kids, you know, be there at that time and looking into a possibility of some sort of lunch snack on the way out, out the door thing. So that's the proposal that we have for our summer school.
Do you, do you have an estimate of how many kids you might see?
Well, right now, in, we are looking at Acadience and NWA data, also teacher recommendations. It varies. I've seen numbers of twenty-nine. But some of those kids, that's like twenty-nine total for the grade. That's for both math and language arts. But some of those kids may, some of those numbers may be a child for both. So I don't have the exact numbers to.
I'm just thinking, I know days will start getting warm.
Yeah.
And you have the library, which is air conditioned, but.
Yeah, fortunately, we have the library air conditioned. We also have the music room that we can use as well.
Yeah, that's great.
And we'll, we'll, we'll make sure they're comfortable.
Yeah.
And a lot of it could be outside as well.
Yeah. Certainly in the morning, Jeff.
Yeah. Hey, thank you.
Thanks, John.
Good evening, everyone. Nice to see people as well. It's good to get out, although it's a little later than I'm used to. Learning loss at secondary, learning loss for all of us and everywhere in the pandemic, in the pandemic looks very different, right? This, it comes in all shapes, forms and sizes. And so our summer program is sort of designed to address some different needs, some different types of needs that we're seeing. You know, kids have, we have had experienced learning loss for a number of reasons. We see kids with, and adults quite frankly, with mental health issues that, that get in the way of them being able to access either in, in days or on a regular basis sometimes. We've seen kids with big gaps in their, in their ability to engage. We have kids who just haven't engaged, period. Like, just, just aren't coming when we go remote. And despite extraordinary efforts by teachers, counselors and admin to, to connect and get those kids back engaged, we have the pivots, right? The pivots disrupt people. And so they're good most of the time, but then we pivot, it throws them off and, you know, we have some gaps. And then we have other people that, when we're on campus, they close that gap quickly and others who don't. So there's really a whole hodgepodge of needs with our kids that we're seeing. So as we look at that, and we know that we have a lot of data available to us, right? So we have, on NWA data, we have SAS introduced first. We're gonna have another batch of SAS coming up, which hopefully will give us some information about where kids are at currently. We have our local assessments, right? We know sort of how kids are doing. If we're talking about high school, we know what their grades are. We know who's passing. We know who's failing. So we have all of these measures available to us. So with that, the secondary model at the middle school, there's two models there. They're both focused on ELA and mathematics. We're focusing on what we can. We're drilling down on what's important, okay? Ms. Black talked about the importance of math, right? We know math is scaffolded. It's sequential. It's important to be able to access it at the next level as you move on. So we're gonna look at math data, gonna identify those students in math who are scoring in the lowest fifty percent based on our NWA scores and maybe in the lowest quartile in the SAS. But also compare that to what we know about how they're doing on a day-to-day basis in the classroom. Just to give you an idea of that range, there are some kids who haven't particularly engaged well, but they may still score high. We're not as concerned about those kids because they have it, for whatever reason, they have it, right? And as we look about, look at competencies, we're really looking at readiness with those priority competencies to be successful at the next level. We can't in the summer program close and reteach everything that's been lost. We're gonna just try to close that as closely as we can. So, so you, week that we're offering for middle school, that's the week right after school. That's actually for kids that we sort of see in that category of, maybe they're missing a few things. We just need, they just need that little extra week, a little more English, a little more practice with the reading and writing, a little, maybe missed a math concept here or there. We want to reinforce that. They're not for kids who didn't engage at all. They're not for the kids that we see failing miserably, but they're still falling in that at-risk sort of group, and we want to just give them a little extra time. So that's that first week. The two weeks following, there are two two-week sessions after that for ELA and for math. And we're not sure how many kids we're looking at yet. We're still looking at data. But we're at least planning for, for two sections, two two-week sections. Some kids may need to just come for two weeks. I know that we're gonna have kids that haven't engaged, maybe kids that have less than a seventy-five percent attendance rate, and they're not doing well on those exams, the SAS scores, the NWA. They're gonna need more intensive work. And so our hope is that we're gonna be able to staff face-to-face math instruction for up to four weeks for those kids. Minimum two hours a day. It may be that some of those kids might get double sessions. It's, 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 it could be that, to that level. For our eighth graders in particular, we're really looking for algebra readiness. They've got to come to the high school algebra-ready. Looking for, we're working towards that. It's part of our, our math lens that we look at the math data with. It's part of what we're looking at in the program of studies. It's part of what we're looking at as we're scheduling and working with teachers for next year. So, you know, it's really important that we get as much of that and as close to that as we can with all of these kids. So that, that's the middle school program. Those are sort of the two places that we're looking at. We go to the high school program. High school's a little easier to talk about because high school works by credit. Right? We talk about credit. So kids who fail aren't earning credits. If you're not earning credits, you're falling behind that track to graduate. Now you're at risk. So we can really draw a very linear correlation between credits earned and, and being on track to graduate, right? We want to get all of our kids there. So for the high school, we're looking at two weeks of. So for the high school, we're looking at two weeks of, again, two hours per day. Two two-week sessions, so I'm sorry, four weeks of math and ELA. We're also offering courses in there that would cover students who need social studies, science, credit that they can earn either virtually through some sort of an online access, but at school with a facilitator in the room, helping them, keep them on track, helping them with questions that they might have. Hoping we can staff face-to-face math instruction here. We know, we're pretty optimistic that we're going to be able to staff face-to-face ELA support for students who might need that. Extra writing practice, work with reading, et cetera. But we are hopeful that we'll be able to staff those sections of math because we anticipate we will need those at various levels, not just Algebra I, but other classes as well to keep sophomores, juniors, especially this year's juniors who may have lost some credit opportunities, if particularly if they were remote. Some of those students didn't have as many options to them as remote students. I think that's it.
Thank you, Dave.
You're welcome.
Good evening. Erica McNeil, Director of Students. And then here's talk about our preschool program. Our preschool program has been had for many, many years. And our philosophy in the preschool program is really a collective cooperation with our related service professionals, paraprofessionals, our teachers and our families. We're talking about our three and four-year-olds who are first starting with us in their educational career. So it's very important to have families as part of that team. Our goals are to develop our social, self-help and independent skills for our youngest children. We want to enhance their ability to be able to be successful in educational environments. And we also want to work with families so that they feel like they can be successful working with their students and what their needs are. Just to give you a little flavor of what the preschool looks like, in the nineteen and twenty school year, we were able to expand to a second classroom. That's due to the building project being completed. Previously, we only had one classroom. Now we have two dedicated classrooms that are all built for little people with little furniture and little toilets and all. Those two classrooms provide an AM and a PM session to students and were approved by the Department of Education as both an early childhood setting and also a special education setting. Our early childhood classrooms, we have a maximum of fourteen students, seven of which are students with disabilities and seven of which are our peer models. In a special education class, this is our students with our most significant needs. Our, our class size is capped at twelve students. And each one of those classes have a teacher, a paraprofessional, and then they may have additional paraprofessional support based on student need and also related service. Our speech paths, our occupational therapists and physical therapists.
Erica, those, those caps are just standard, they're not pandemic related, they're just standard.
Those are. Yep. On the left is kind of our brochure. You might have seen that in the library or in the school, out in the community. So we can, you know, advertise our program. And on the other side is our application. You can see that for our typically developing peers and those peer models, we do charge for this program so that we are offering a high-quality preschool program to the community as well. With the expansion of the classrooms, obviously we're able to then provide more community, families and students with more of that opportunity. So the proposal before you tonight is, we would like to be able to provide a scholarship program for our early childhood settings. It would offer our families who are unable to pay for this kind of experience, a high-quality preschool experience. It's early intervention for our students that only prepares them for their elementary years ahead of them and their educational careers, you know, all the way through. We would be looking to have scholarships awarded based on their minimum attendance. So we've set in our program, if you're a three-year-old student, you will always go a minimum of at least two days. If you're a student with a disability, it could be three or four or five days. And then when you move to your four-year-old year, it's a minimum of three days with the potential of four or five days. We would base that on students who are qualifying for free and reduced. So these are forms that families are already filling out. We're not asking them to fill out additional paperwork. And our families are actually already using these, our food service program. If you're a preschool student, you're just like any other student. You can come in and have breakfast or snacks or lunch based on when you're in there. So these are forms that are already being completed. So I would basically be checking with food service just to make sure that a student is, is qualifying for one of those. And then I would work with the Assistant Principal for Student Services to say, you know, this student qualifies under reduced and can have a scholarship. They then schedule that student in. We would have a small cost for these families. This gives families that opportunity to be part of it and really feel like they're doing the same thing everyone else is doing. So if you're a three-year-old and you qualify for free, you would be paying five dollars a month or fifteen if it was reduced. If you're a four-year-old, it'd be seven for free or twenty for reduced.
I'm going to harp on this because I always do when I hear about the free and reduced lunch program. People need to fill that out because the federal, is it Title I?
IDEA is being funded as well. A lot of our federal funds are based on this.
Gets back from our taxes is based on people filling these out. So even if you're not getting the lunches this year, please fill out these forms, it's so important.
So it's kind of there, you know, like get these forms filled out. Not only can you get a scholarship, you can get your breakfast when you come into school on those days.
Yep, that's great.
Erica, our program is a certified early childhood center.
Yes.
Yes, could you speak a little bit about that?
So that just, what that means is we have basically fifty percent of our peer models and fifty percent students with disabilities. So it's really a regular education setting. It's just like if you were walking into any kindergarten setting. We do have the option to move into a special education setting and that's when we have our more, more needy children in and we really need to focus on specific skills. So we've had some students who might be, you know, this is an example. So Tuesday and Thursday, it's a special ed classroom, but then Monday and Wednesday, they're going into the early childhood setting. What we really find is that students learn from other students. And so having those typically developing peers has been hugely beneficial, not only for the students who are accessing that as a community member, but also our students with disabilities. It shows great play skills, they have the language models. So it's really a win-win for us to be expanding and having that early childhood setting.
And also just for new members, we also concurrent to the summer school programming that we are offering at the junior, senior high school, we also have extended. Year, can you just speak?
Yep, so this is a program that we've always run. Of course, it's, it's also something we're required to do, but we have what we call ESY, which is Extended School Year. So students who are on IEPs, they're students with disabilities. If their teams determine that they would be making significant regression over the summer in the skills that we've been teaching them all year to try to close that gap between their peers, we then would provide our summer program. And so I didn't bring that here tonight, but that is a program that we run every year. We will continue to run this year. It occurs for four weeks in the month of July. So they just can't steal all my staff for their other programs. But we will be running that as well this summer. So in addition to these other programs you're hearing about, we will also be running our special education program.
And some of our thinking as a team was that we wanted to kind of go dark for families in August and for our staff frankly, so that we wouldn't be offering programming. So if families would then be able to schedule any vacation plans for the month of August and then, you know, after school ends, before summer camps begin, we'd, we'd put some, you know, targeted programming in there and then the month of July would be our offering some of this competency, course recovery, credit recovery as well as the extended year program. So all would wrap up, I believe, by the end of July, basically. And so the month of August, you know, if families, making them aware of that now allows them to be able to, you know, plan for some, some downtime, some, you know, some time to relax, rejuvenate and enjoy some of the summer activities.
One of the things that I've tried to do during COVID is sort of look at positive things that have happened. And I think one of the things, because this is the second year in a row that we've talked about non-ESY summer school. And I think this is something that is not beneficial just for this year with, but the gaps moving forward so that we don't get people in the high school level who get to their senior year and are missing credits and have had no chance to recover them. So I think that this process and this mindset really will, will help us moving forward. Does anyone have any other questions about Erica's scholarship program?
I hate to bring it up because it's such a fantastic idea, program, but unfortunately it's part of our job. Do we economic, have no kind of economic impact this might have?
It's hard to give you the exact number just because students, there's different rates for three and four-year-olds and I don't know who those kids would be yet. I ran some really, really rough numbers. The positive is because of COVID, we've reduced our expected rate to two thousand dollars in preschool. The hope is that next fall, we'll be able to open and we'll be opening those slots up. We would, if we filled every typical slot and if I said all of the scholarship kiddos were at the free level, which is the most impact and in the older age, it would only be a thousand and thirty-two dollars that is left. And in addition. It's, it's, it's cheap money and for those seven kids that we would get into these slots, it's a huge deal for these kids.
Hearing that, and I'm skipping forward and I'm getting back to the presentation, but I, I thought we might want to go ahead and proceed with the action item of approving this. So I seek a motion to approve the scholarship program that.
Before we skip ahead to that one, I, I just want to point out, I think all the summer funding has already been allocated to the summer school program, so just to get that, people aware of that.
Yeah, the summer school money is built into our operating budget.
But I'd second. You said you're seeking one, I'd move it.
We have a motion. We have a motion for Mr. Swanson, the secretary of Mrs. McKinney, to approve the scholarship program. All those in favors, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Looks to be approved unanimously.
Thank you.
Fantastic.
Thank you, Erica. Take care of those babies. Kind of to wrap things, things up, all, all of the things that we've been talking about really take a tremendous amount of time. And that's the thing in schools that we seem to struggle with the most. It's really hard, especially to bring staff together to do a lot of this work and to develop some of these competencies even just around, for example, teaching math and adopting a new math program or once they're armed with some curriculum documents, starting to develop lessons and assessments that go along with those things. It takes time. So Dr. Givens has had a conversation with Nate Green. He is in charge of school approval at the Department of Education and he has shared with her that it would be feasible next year for us to build into our schedule some days for professional development that would actually be school days, but could be addressed as distance learning. So if we were to do that, the proposal would be that we would ask for up to five days annually in the school calendar to be identified as asynchronous, or asynchronous learning days. So it would look very similar to what our Fridays look like right now. And we would propose that we add five of those, no more than five, but up to five in the calendar just approved by the school board. So if you were to do that each year, you would look at the calendar as a whole and determine how you felt about those days, their placement and whether or not you were comfortable adding them. And those days, as I said, would look just the way our days look now. And we would use those days solely for professional development and developing resources and tools for teaching and learning. We would monitor that through our frontline system, which is what we already use to monitor professional development. And so we could certainly report that out if asked to do so. And additionally, many, several years ago, I'm going to say maybe ten years ago, the, the new, they, they had rules that allowed us to, in lieu of snow days, have what they refer to as blizzard bag days. And so it came about because, you know, we live in New Hampshire and we've had years where kids are in school till July. We've actually gone to school in July because sometimes we get really hard, hard winters. And so as an alternative to that, we propose that this board approve up to five days for predicted inclement weather events. So those would be synchronous learning days where the teachers would be online with the students, teaching them remotely. But they would have to be planned, obviously, because we would need to make sure that students knew to take their technology, their computers, their chargers, and that teachers would have time to prepare, to make that, to plan for that remote day the next day. If in fact we didn't have that time or we had any large-scale power outages, then in that case, we would just go to a typical snow day. And that sometimes does happen. We would require all students and teachers, obviously, to participate in that attendance. If, if students missed it, they would, or didn't participate that day, it would be a day of absenteeism and they would have to make up the work as they would in any other day. So that is the proposal, our, our distance learning inclement weather proposal. So, yes.
I just had, so there were a lot of questions about this, the Learning Fridays.
Yep.
We won't have any half-days. We used to have half-days and every parent knows where all of a sudden you wake up and the kids are like, I'll be home at lunch and you're like, crap, it's a half-day.
Right.
So those will no longer exist.
They're gone.
So we're just saying to the parents, these are learning days at home, similar to what we're doing now, but they will be a little different because they'll, obviously you won't be more prepared. They won't have to come and get book lists. They'll be coming home with stuff.
Correct. And in addition to that, the placement of the days will be different. We've talked a lot about making sure that as we plan these days, we're not impacting any one, any one, you know, art or music class or course. So we would be very thoughtful about how they're placed in the calendar as well.
Your absence, because not everybody has Wi-Fi. Not everybody has the ability to plug in the computer. So for those kids, how, obviously all of you would have to discuss that, but there'll be things in place to help those families?
Just, just the same way we've done it this year, hotspots and making sure that all kids have access. Jason has worked really hard to make sure that we have all the technology necessary. He continues to do that. He's adding some additional chargers where we have computer parts coming, charging stations. So we really are in a great place with technology to be able to do these things when really in reality, prior to the pandemic, it's one of the silver linings, we wouldn't have ever been able to do something like this. It just wouldn't have been possible. And to your point, most staff would tell you that a half-day PD day isn't, you, you don't get a lot done. You just get started and now you've got to stop because the kids are coming in or they leave and you're kind of already shot. You've already had your day and now you've had lunch and you've got a couple hours at the end of the day. We just, none of us, none of us, you know, work, work our best with short stops and starts.
And with the introduction of core programs, significant amounts of professional sustained and continuous and regular professional development is important to the efficacy of that implementation. So in addition to the curriculum piece, this PD piece is really, really important. I mean, mathematics, modern mathematics don't look the way that they did when we were going, I'll say, when I was going to school, you know? And so teaching mathematics, using current best practices and models is very different. It's very effective, but very different. And for teachers to do it well, we need to have time for them to engage in learning.
Right, and I think, I think this is really exciting to give teachers access to training tools for themselves. You know, we can all think about in our own careers and when we get access to trainings and when we get access to better programs and better tools. And I think, you know, we're only asking for five days of that. I think it's, I think it's great to give teachers the ability to learn themselves. So I like it.
And I think we all recognize we have a lot of heavy lifting ahead of us.
I mean, I totally understand the rationale behind it and I could see the need for it, without question. My only concern is the impact it has on the parents. Like I, you, you mentioned, oh, my kid's coming home at noon. What about the, you wake up and say, oh, I'm not going to school today, you know? Whereas in the afternoon, they may have to get a two-hour coverage or something, or three-hour coverage for their kid, their child.
There still were some all-day PD situations in the past, task calendars.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have, built into the teacher's contract, we have six days, right? Two usually happen at the beginning of the school year and then there's four full days. So it's not that we're adding all of these days. It's, we're eliminating half-days. And they're not all on Friday, by the way. So it's not like we're going from one extreme to another. What we're doing is just moving those half-days into full days. So in the past, parents have been accustomed to having at least four of those days throughout the year. We have basically eight months, so it's adding basically four more, I think is what it amounts to. And they're not all on Fridays. And they're not all on Fridays. I know you've heard this. It's a Fridays, they're not all on Fridays. Not every one of the days is on a Friday. A number of them, we tried to target for Fridays, thinking that that would be more appealing to families than a Wednesday. And also because for their own kind of mental health break at the secondary level in particular, having homework-free weekends periodically is a very good thing. So our thought was that on those Fridays, for those students, that they'd have independent learning days, where we will have support available to them. It's not that they're going out there and they're stuck. So help them kind of get caught up, work on projects and things, and then enjoy homework-free weekend. And so we try to, you know, we try to put those days in, in locations that would be appealing to families. So you'll see that one of the days that we have, which is actually an all-staff day, is, is the day after, in other words, no students are learning that day, is the day after Columbus Day. So that, I think it's Columbus Day or is it Veterans Day?
Veterans.
Veterans Day. So, so kids aren't coming back on a Friday. So we're not having a Thursday off and then coming back on a Friday. So we, we really try to be, you know, not just work around and design a schedule that makes sense for us educationally, but we're really, this, this calendar has gone through about five iterations to try to then say, what makes sense for, for family? What would be best for families? What would they maybe appreciate? And how can we make this, you know, somewhat appealing, though we understand not necessarily always ideal for, for all of our stakeholders? So, so just wanted to give a shout out about that, that we, we really put a lot of thought into it. You know, like the day before Christmas is a day, families can then travel. The day before February break, so if families want to travel, you know, we tried to put some of those days in so that families would have some kind of a, you know, kind of a little perk, so to speak, you know? And we can get, you know, some of our work. I just thought I'd point that out. And the other thing too, just, just to note, we are going to have a town hall meeting with parents. Our principals are going to send out a note tomorrow to let them know where we're going to send them the calendar, the proposed calendar. And we're going to go over the summer learning plan so that they're, they're aware of them. We bring awareness to it. And they can ask questions about it and they can get that kind of on their schedule early on. So just wanted to give a shout out. So that'll be Wednesday at six o'clock. We'll be doing a town hall on the calendar and our learning plan so that we can answer questions that, that folks might have about either of those things.
So I mean, I think it's fair to say we're in crisis in a few ways in the district.
Yes.
Without being alarmist, but, um, and, and professional development is one of the ways we're going to get out of that crisis. A very clear way. Are there any alternatives we're, we're missing as far as PD time? Like, I mean, are we basically telling parents that, yeah, we're asking you to make this investment, but that's so we can invest in your kids?
Yeah.
Are there other options for time to do this? I mean, the summer, but then you have people traveling, you have?
You know, absolutely. I, I think, to your point, right now, we are, you have to weigh those days that kids are learning remotely against the importance of developing our systems to support them as learners, right? So we have a lot to do to be better at what we're doing. And when we say professional development, a lot of it isn't necessarily even teacher learning, but teachers having an opportunity to sit and collaborate and work on their curriculum. Because we've only talked about one part of the three parts of curriculum development. We still have to decide, if we can say what, what we want to teach kids and define what they should know and be able to do. But we have yet to define what's that going to look like in practice and how are we going to assess that? All of that, all of those are things that we have to work on and we can only work on those as, as teachers and teams. So doing that work is going to ensure that our students have much better experiences in the New Market School District. Is, is just the reality of it. But in answer to your question, if, in, if in fact, we can at some point develop a better subpool again, we can rotate substitutes through and have sessions where kids are at school and they've got a substitute and teachers are able to have a release day that day to work as a grade level team. And we rotate those folks through. Right now, our subpool is so lacking that we can't rely on that. But if in fact, that happens, that's a great alternative. And oftentimes, that's how schools will support this work.
Yeah, I mean.
And hopefully we'll get there, you know? Once we get through all of this and we can, I mean, ideally, that would be a place we would want to be.
I mean, it's going to be a hardship on some parents, but I think we realize that and understand that. And it's just, we don't have a ton of choices really.
Right.
We need to get this professional development time in.
Yeah.
If we're going to get out of this crisis.
Yes. Good point. And, and the other thing too, again, we'll continue to work with the rec department on those days. I know that I was, a parent let me know that an earlier start time for the rec department program would be better, which is great feedback, you know? So I'll have conversations with Amy and we'll, we have plenty of time here, you know, now. If this calendar's approved, which will be before the board and these learning, uh, remote learning proposals will be for, for the board next, at the next meeting. So I'll work with her to, to, to make sure there's options for parents on those days in case they're in a position where they, they don't have, you know, appropriate supervision at home for their kids.
And just to clarify, the remote blizzard bag days are not going to be used. It's if, if there would, there'd be no school, or we can let them do a blizzard bag day. So these are just, right, these are options.
So the, the difference between the two, Gary, is one is, is they're not really blizzard bag days because blizzard bag, but inclement weather days
Yeah.
are synchronous. So they'll get on with teachers and all of that. In case of emergency.
Yeah.
The other ones are the ones that are built into our calendar.
Yeah, so I guess my point is for those days, people need to realize that it's either your kids at home doing work with the teacher remote, you know, remotely doing work synchronously, or they're at home in front of the TV or whatever. They're going to be home either way.
Yeah.
Either way, they're going to be home.
I shouldn't say in front of the TV. It could be, it could be the Xbox. Let's not offend anybody.
Right. And, and, and working on projects. So with these, with, you know, it's like to be forewarned is to be forearmed. And so by, by having this set up in advance, both, both our teachers and our families can, can really make these valuable days. So if teachers know that on this Friday, what we're trying to, the goal is to get kids caught up in a way so that they can enjoy a homework-free weekend, which is not necessarily an issue at the elementary school, but a huge issue at the secondary level, you know? Then we, we, we have that built in. We're planning for it. We know what that's about, you know? And it really will make for a better flow and a better experience for families and for students and for staff. So it's, it's, it's really good stuff. Lot of thought behind all of this. It's, it's all interconnected.
And I think it's good to have, for me, and I think when you meet with people on Wednesday, is to see the interconnection of rationale, the learning processes and how that relates to the development of the calendar. That's a good segue and connection in my mind.
Thank you.
So in conclusion, when we really ask for the support that, that we require from the board, we, you've already supported the preschool scholarship program, so thank you for that. That's wonderful. Eventually, hopefully you'll approve our calendar as well, but that's something we'll want to look at. And then finally, at some point, hopefully prior to the end of the school year, the goal is to bring a math program before you. And so that will, those will be the, kind of the, the actions that we'll be looking for moving forward.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you so much.
Thanks so much.
For all the work and everything. We appreciate it.
Huge leap forward.
Bravo, team.
Um, the next thing on the agenda is committee assignments. And I've developed a draft and will send around, and Andrew, you don't have this because I didn't send it to you.
But you're on all the committees.
So we get to sign you up for whatever we want.
No, Andrew, you're not on all the committees, but I'll read through the next one for you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, guys. And I'm also sending around the top of three, the first three board goals too. Um, we'll go through them.
Is there, uh, is there a way for me to get the handouts that we're giving to you today?
Yes, I will make sure, did, did, um, do you have any of them?
If it's hard, if it's hard with the board, I'll text it to them right now.
Gary's going to text it to you right now.
If you allow me to use my phone for a minute.
Okay, so I, I did not hear from very many of you about your committee assignment. So I just put some stuff in and I thought we can talk about it. I sort of placed people where I thought it made sense. So obviously, I'm chair, Heather's the vice chair. Gary, I'm thinking, as you will see, I've sort of put you in a lot of budgetary fiscal areas.
Put me in all of them.
I did.
He's good at that.
Yes, that was my thought process. And then the, for the budget committee, and Gary, since you've been on the budget committee, that seems to make sense. For the alternate, Elizabeth, I put you in that slot because you've been on the budget committee before and basically you would fill in when Gary could not. For the policy committee, I put Andrew and myself. For the school board rep of the SST, Elizabeth continuing that for this year. The district staff development committee representative, I put Andrew. Ironically, the, the two places that I put him were among the ones that he wanted to be, so it made things very happy for me. Um, as we learned last time, the vice chair is the delegate to the New Hampshire School Board Association, so Heather, that's you. And then these next two sort of pertain to the non-meeting that we had. Gary and Elizabeth have been working with the support staff and negotiating with them. My thought was that you guys continued that work, worked with the teachers during this time. And on the last negotiation, I thought, Heather, you and I could do that. Gary, put you back on the CIP to work on that. I put myself on the, as a representative on the protocol task force. There's a new, again, going with the money, Gary, um, facilities, buildings and ground task force. I put you on that. The weekly manifest signers, and this is just something that I wanted to add on, you know?
That's a great idea.
And Gary, I thought, if it's okay with you?
No, it's fantastic. I enjoy doing it.
And my thought with that is if there's a time that you or I can't come, I'll reach out to one of the other board members to get them to come, but we know that we can be counted on to sign those manifests. And then the last three are, and if we look at the school board goals, these, the, the last three are committees that Susan develops based upon our, and that's why they're in a different color, based upon our board goals. The board goals are listed back at the second page. I will, we'll talk about the retreats in a minute. But the first goal deals with board superintendent roles, responsibilities. We talked about that a lot at the last meeting, so Heather and I will focus on that one. Personnel policies, Andrew and I will look at that and how the policies affect, affect, um, personnel and hiring and things of that nature. And then we've all talked about communications in a variety of different ways. And so Heather and Elizabeth will work on that one.
My only thought it would be with the support staff team.
Okay.
I just think, I'm wondering if it makes sense for Andrew to get a, I don't say taste of it, but to get a little bit of an experience. There probably won't be a ton with the support staff this year.
My own, I, I see where you're going.
But I understand what you're saying. No, it would be in lieu of me. But I know what you're saying because we already had that relationship.
You guys have the relationship?
Yeah.
And the understanding.
Yeah.
And the history of the whole thing, you know?
Yeah, you know, it makes sense.
So I think, I think for that, we should keep that. Anything else?
Yeah.
And I think that's important too, because Gary, you'll still be on the board when it's time to negotiate the next contract.
True.
Elizabeth may or may not run. If she decides not to, then at least there's, there's again, that continuity, so.
Yeah.
That's a, that's a good point, Susan.
Can I, I'm sorry.
Yes, Andrew.
Can I ask real quick, how does, uh, what's the process for the, um, contract negotiation? Like, does the board come together with a proposal first before you two enter into the negotiations?
Yeah, so already administratively, we're making notes, you know, about things that are important to us that would help, you know, advance us forward as a school district. And my experience, usually the administration comes together with some proposals. So we, as a negotiating team, we talk through what they are. The, you know, teachers' union does the same. I'm recommending and have had conversations with the teachers about using an interest-based bargaining approach as opposed to a traditional positional bargaining approach. And they're, they're open to that. It's, it's, you'll get to the same place, but it's much softer on the people than traditional positional bargaining is. So, um, they're interested in, in that. And if that's what our group agrees to, then we'll, you know, we'll probably have a trainer come in and, and do some work with both parties so we understand what the process looks like. But it, it really is a, is a great way. And I think that with our relationship with the teachers, it's very collaborative. And we've worked, you know, together on so many issues since I've been here that it's consistent with kind of, you know, the model we've been using anyway, so.
One of the things, Andrew, you know, last time, we had a major shift in the teachers', um, compensation. You know, we changed the, the benefits, we changed the salary, all different things. It was a substantial shift. So when Mike and I were on that team, we came back to the board to sort of present where we were and just make sure that everyone was on board with what we were going to commit to, to it. Just because we all would have to support it. So that's sort of how that works.
So I, like, we'll see the, kind of the process along the way before we see the actual contract in front of us to vote on, correct?
Yes. You, you'll know fundamentally what is, what is, is in the contract. You know, especially the money pieces that are usually the most, you know, it's not going to be whether the, the, the planning time goes from 27 minutes to 32 minutes. Not things of that nature, but like the major items that are changing and that are really going before the voters, you guys would know about long before.
And usually, the full board sets the parameters, that's my experience, before we get into negotiations so that there's clarity around
Excellent point.
what the, what the negotiating team has the authority to negotiate on behalf of the board. So those conversations will take place in advance of any sit down with the association.
You guys will be fully apprised of any of it. And the same goes for the paraprofessionals.
Great, great. Thank you.
Support services. Any other questions about that? I will make this non-draft and we'll take it from there. Susan, we had talked about getting some retreats started. Our first goal is that the New Market School Board will develop a common understanding of board and superintendent roles and responsibilities and put in practices for the transferability and sustainability of that knowledge, including but not limited to the following: board member onboarding materials, an annual calendar of continuing education and training on critical topics for all board members. So what we would like to do is, and Susan, you can lead us in this, sort of map out some time for us to start having retreats. So that we, you know, we, when we talked last time about really, you know, getting into collaborative work and, and getting the team firmed up, we want to start that off with the right foot. Understanding where our roles are, what lanes we're in, how they relate, how we're a five-person team, how we're a six-person team, all those things. So Susan, have you, do you have any thoughts for dates, tentatively?
Um, I, not knowing what folks' schedules were, you know, I don't, I don't know. Sometimes we've had these, you know, late afternoon into the evening and have dinner. We've also had them Saturday morning. Sometimes I just, I wasn't sure what.
What's the pleasure or preference or easiest? Is a Saturday the easiest concept? Is that even a possibility?
Either, it's fine.
Yeah, it's a possibility. I mean, I guess I want to think about, um, kind of on the same thought process as we're doing personal development days for teachers, being full days. It might be something that board may want to think, consider schedule timeframe where we do professional development hashtag retreat. And maybe it is a half, more of a full day instead of just, you know, two or three hours.
That's what we used to do. It used to be a full Saturday.
That's what we did my first year.
And what are we talking, a couple times a year?
We did, um, usually retreats in general are held, you know, after a new board is elected and in the summertime. So if the board doesn't change over, we would, we would always have them in the summertime.
To sort of set the tone for the, the fall.
And to set goals for the upcoming year. I mean, all of those things.
Like the week before school starts, when we would usually do it, two weeks before. Every Thursday, we would have a normal board meeting.
And one, one thing that, you know, was in place a couple years ago that we might want to talk about aside from this is looking at, you know, having a more business-heavy meeting one time a month and then a second time a month, looking at a topic. You know, we talked about being a learning community. Obviously, it's going to still need to be business-conducted, but maybe we can get some of that. And, and the, the public can see us learning and working collaboratively, which I think is important as well. So that's, that's something we can talk about later. But Heather, I, I definitely appreciate your point. And I think the more time that we spend learning about what it is we're charged to do and the best ways to do it, we're better, all better served, I think.
And then I also like, when the voice is best, we can have the voices of the students come in and tell us things that are happening in school.
Yes, I mean, and I think, I think that once, once COVID is over and things are safer and we can see the faces of the kids whose daily life we impact on these decisions that we make. I think, Gary, when we had, um, what was his name?
I was trying to think of his name. Reese's Maverick.
Maverick On. That was the first time and it was like, okay, I'm going to cry because this is why we sit here. And, you know, to, to see the, the results, to hear about the immigration. And, you know, just to see the, the, the results, to hear about the immigration simulation, to hear about the, um, robotics team and what they're doing, what, and not understanding how it works, but they can articulate it and I sort of understand it a little bit better. And it's like, those are the things that, why we're here, and so I think that that's just important to always reiterate.
We were able to do that at SST the other day. They, it, it's all remote, but we had students come in and speak, and you're right, you're reminded. Oh, yeah, that's what we're here for.
I mean, because, you know, it's like, when, when we make a decision on the scholarships, we're directly impacting a child and their family to be able to come to our program who would not be able to. And when you think about the effect that might have on that child and the family and the community and all those things, it's pretty awesome. I know I'm a sap, but you guys know that already, but it's true. Anyway, um, Susan, do you want to give us, Andrew, does Saturday work for you?
Uh, yes, um, kind of what, are we starting, like, you were looking at, like, April already, or are we looking, like?
I would say probably the sooner the better.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
But I mean, it is, you know, it is, it does get complicated. Susan, do you want to look at your schedule?
Yeah, I can, yeah, maybe you and I can look. If, if Saturdays are your preference, af, uh, later out in the afternoon for like four, five hours is.
I mean, the reality is, Susan, we should really kind of think about what you're.
Yeah, what can you do, Susan?
You live a little way away.
Well, I know Andrew is a teacher also, so that limits, you know, what you might be able to do. So I, I just didn't know what anybody's schedule looks like, so.
Everybody has baseball coming up, so if we could hit, if we could do it before baseball really gets ramped up.
Maybe the first one we do is just a couple hours. We're gonna need a couple.
I, I think we're gonna need a couple, and, um, it takes an awful lot of effort to plan these, to do them well.
I would say, Susan, why don't, why don't we do this? Susan, why don't you look at what is reasonable for you to do?
Yeah.
And then come with some dates, and then I'll farm them out and we'll decide on what makes sense.
Can we just ping everybody, see what the earliest you could do during a weekday is? Like, for me, after four o'clock, I could easily do.
Is this bad for you, Gary?
Anytime after four o'clock, I could def, I could definitely do. So I'm just trying to think if everybody was able to do after five, that would give you more of a, Susan, more of a window.
What time are you available to do stuff? In the after, in the eve, what time is the earliest you could be in a meeting after school?
Uh, three-thirty.
Okay, so four o'clock, so.
Well, you're up on a gun quit.
Four o'clock, honey. Like, I'm looking at eight.
So just to give you some, some borders of what to think about.
Why don't you look at your schedule and see what's rational?
So, so half-days or four to six hours is our, is our range, right? I'm thinking, right?
Probably not, not after school, after work, right?
But not, if it's, if it's, if it's a six hour, it's a Saturday.
Yeah.
But a four hour, starting at four and ending at eight would be another good chunk.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll, we'll, we'll defer to you, Susan, um, because you do an excellent job, and I'm excited for what you're experiencing.
And just to, so people understand that these goals that the last board got together and came up with, and then, so we'll do these until, what, towards the end of?
Well, we really have not gotten started on these goals.
Well, no, that's, we did it so late.
There's probably gonna be some recurring ones.
Well, uh, we did get a calendar, uh, thanks from Mike, so, no, but I mean, yeah, so what, at some point, we'll set a new, and then.
Probably in the retreat in August, we'll look at.
Just so the new members take that in, yeah.
Yeah. And, you know, there, there will be some things, because I think we had more in more in-depth, but anyway. Any more questions about that? All right, so we'll, we'll get, I'll get back to you. Um, the next item, we are moving into our action items. I seek a motion to approve the March eighteenth public and non-public minutes.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Swanson and a second from Ms. McKenney. Any discussion or amendments to the minutes? Hearing none, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. The next thing is the manifests.
The new kid has it.
Yeah, just give us the total and the date.
Uh, the total is?
These are highlighted in yellow at the bottom.
It might be on, yeah, it might be the.
No, it'd be in a different sheet. There'll be a summary sheet usually.
I'm new.
Sorry, you're just on TV.
Is it right there in the?
And you move to approve that total number?
On the bottom.
On the bottom.
I move to approve the total of all manifests in the amount of seven hundred and ninety-two thousand, nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars and sixteen cents.
I'll second that.
We have a motion from Ms. Durant and a second from Ms. McKenney to approve the manifest. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Su, Susan, we move, we're moving to the softboard, softball scoreboard. Can you just give us a little background on that?
Yeah, this is actually very cool.
It is.
So cool.
So we had a, um, donor, uh, donate money for a scoreboard for the baseball program. And the company that was awarded the contract, um, is donating, um, a softball, um, uh, scoreboard for the girls.
Equity?
And, yes, so, which, you know, and, and the thing is, is that, and always keep in mind that there's Title IX requirements, and so, you know, you can't like, you know, give, give the boys, you know, all of the bling and nothing for the girls, or all the bling to the girls and nothing to the boys, you know, there, there, there needs to be equity. Um, so it was really, um, awesome that the IBEW Local 104, um, is donating a scoreboard for the girls, similar to the boys. I, I had them give you a, you know, some design concepts.
Very nice.
And, um, and they're also donating, and they're gonna install it for us. And so the total kind of donation is nine thousand seven hundred and ninety-four, or the equivalent of that. We're not getting the money, we're getting the scoreboard and both of our scoreboards installed. So, um, also included in here, if you've had an opportunity to look, is, um, some information about liability and workmanship and, you know, how all that would work, uh, so that if you had concerns whatsoever, that there would, you know, that there wouldn't be up to standards, or, you know, if something failed or whatever, that even though they're donating it, they're still warranting it.
Great.
So all of that information is in your packet, and, um, you know, we're so grateful, uh, for this generous donation by the IBEW Local 104.
So great.
It's awesome.
I seek a motion to accept the generous donation of the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Local Union 104 of the softball score, so, scoreboard.
So moved.
I'll second that.
We have a motion from Mr. Swanson, a second from Ms. McKenney. Uh, I just want to say thank you for the generosity of the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Local U, Local Union 104 for doing this. It's amazing that the girls will have a similar thing, and, and we're grateful for the practical scoreboard as well as the installation. Anything else?
Yes, amazing.
We'll move to the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, approved. Thank you very much. And then we have, I believe, two resignations.
We do. It's kind of that time of year, um, where people retire and contemplate, you know, um, their life. Uh, if you're an educator, this is, this is the time you, you have those conversations with yourself. Uh, two staff members who have, um, made a decision to leave our profession for the, um, time being. One of them is Elizabeth Miller. She joined us two years ago as a music teacher, and, uh, she's done a great job.
Truly.
Um, she, she wasn't, uh, she didn't aspire to be a music teacher in a public school. Um, but, uh, you know, after she graduated from college, uh, you know, she applied for a position here to give it a whirl. And she has a, a really nice, um, music lesson business, teaching piano and guitar, and it's just blown up, you know, during COVID, um, and she wants to continue to pursue that. So we thank Liz very much for all she's done for us. She's a great colleague to, um, in, in the building, and, uh, you know, we'll, we'll be sad to see her go, but I don't think it's the end of our relationship with her, and she's just done really good things, so we thank her. Um, the other one is Ally Bowen. She is an English teacher at the junior senior high school, and, uh, she's also a fairly, you know, young, young teacher. I guess I, I say that in, after thirty years. Um, young is under ten years, and, um, I'm not exactly sure when she joined the staff, but she has been with us. She has, um, several young, you know, young children. She's started to, um, have a family of her own. And, uh, one, you know, this is, this is demanding. Teaching is demanding. And sometimes people like to take a little time off and pursue other things and raise their family, and that's the situation for her. So we thank her very much as well for her contributions to our, our kids here. Um, and we wish her well, um, in her next chapter in life.
I seek a motion to accept the two resignations that were just discussed by Dr. Givens.
I make a motion to accept the two resignations.
I'll second that, and I want to thank them for their service.
Thank you so, so much.
Absolutely. We have a motion from Mr. Ant with a second from Ms. McKenney. Thank you for your service, both of you. You've done a lot for our children and for the district. Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Accepted, you asked me. Susan, would you like to talk about, um, action item number five?
Uh, absolutely. So, one of the things that's really important when you're going through the hiring cycle is the ability to offer somebody a position and secure them. Um, you know, there's a staffing shortage in our field, and sometimes, um, you can lose candidates if you cannot, um, you know, offer them a contract, get them to sign on the dotted line. The way New Hampshire law works is a little different than in some other states, in that that the superintendent nominates, um, to the board, and the board, um, accepts or asks questions typically accepts those nominations, and then after that, a contract can, can be rewarded. The problem with that is that the board meets, um, not as frequently. And, uh, for example, I interviewed, um, a teacher for, uh, preschool program today, and she's excellent. Well, she's not just looking here, and so to be able to get her off the market, um, now, uh, the, the process hasn't concluded. And, uh, so I would have to wait until April of fifteenth. In the meantime, if somebody else can get a contract to her, then they secure, and then we're back to square one. So to get the, the best staff possible, it's ideal to be able to have the ability to, um, with, with this waiver, um, for you to allow me to act on your behalf to enter into contracts with teachers, and this is what we've done. Um, we lost some really great candidates last year, and I think the board was just like, let's, let's not do that anymore.
What's the interview process?
So, uh, typically, we have a screening committee, you know, for most, all professional positions and administrative positions. And, um, they, they do the screening, and, uh, reference checks are done, and, uh, the second interview, so the principal nominates up to me, I do the second interview. And, uh, if it all works out and we're pleased and it seems like a good match, and, you know, I think it's, you know, a good fit for us and meets all of my criteria, then I would nominate them to you. So that's kind of the basic, uh, process for hiring.
And Susan, if I'm not mistaken, the hiring cycle is beginning right now, or is it in the process?
Yes, and there, there's quite a few vacancies that we have. Of course, um, our budget was approved, and we had some new positions there. Um, we have some retirements. I think we have three, three, maybe four retirements. We have a couple of resignations, you know, um, likely, probably have a couple more in my experience. And so, um, you know, it's a lot of effort to go through the hiring process and, and do it in a timely fashion. You know, if you, if you delay and, and, and you don't do this in a really, uh, then, like I said, other people are offering opportunities and then, uh.
So the process is, um, the, uh, state is kind of funnels applicants.
No, we, no.
Come to New Market and say, I would like to be the new, you know.
Yeah, so we advertise.
Music teacher, and then that person interviews with the principal?
With usually a screening team, so it could be, it could be, it could be Erica that's, that's gonna represent the administration, like the preschool teacher. There would be, uh, the other preschool teachers on that, that. Christina Cochran from the building administration was on that, so there's a, and then, um, so, so we, we construct the committee, you know, based on those that make the most sense for the position we're hiring. So if it's the third grade teacher, then somebody from the third grade team, probably the teacher coordinator would be part of that.
Okay.
Um, the building administration would be part of that, but Erica wouldn't be, you know. So it's usually, you know, we try to get a group of three or four on each of the committees.
And, and then it goes to the principal?
And the principal, it depends. It, you know, um, sometimes the principal will delegate it, but it always, the nomination comes through the principal to me. Always through the principal to me, though he might delegate, like I said, uh, a portion of that.
Okay.
Um, do, do reference checks and things like that, so.
Sure, sure.
You know, sometimes Erica does it. Um, it just depends.
And it's, and Susan, assuming that you entered into a relationship with someone, I, and it says it on here, that the new staff would be presented to us at the meet, at the next available meeting.
Yeah, so what Patty and I will do is we, we start a roster.
That spreadsheet that we saw.
And it, and it'll list all the open professional positions, and then I bring them forward to you, and I let you know who, who I've hired for which ones, and then you, you confirm the nominations, you know, so that you're taking that action, but you authorize me by approving this to go ahead and enter into a contract with them, get them to sign that and secure them, and then I let you know where we're at with that. I have very high standards, um, and, um, you know, they, they, they have to jump through some, they really have to meet my expectation or I'll go back out. It's too important. Hiring's job one.
Yeah, oh, God, yes.
But delaying in a market like this is also detrimental to our ability to recruit the highest quality staff, so.
We've spent so much time, obviously, you know, Deb and Erica, to give our teachers the quality leadership. Um, I think that making sure that we can make decisions quickly on candidates that best fit positions. Um, I, I don't want to see us wait too long on things like that. Um, the job market is very tight, and we need to come with an aggressive offer and find someone that fits our needs, and I wouldn't want to wait two weeks in hopes that that candidate doesn't go somewhere else.
What I'm hearing, Heather, is that you might want to make a motion to authorize a superintendent to enter into contract with qualified staff on behalf of the school.
Yeah.
And waiving policies, section GCF and GTA.
And provide the school board with a list of newly hired professional staff at the next regularly scheduled school board meeting.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion to authorize superintendent to do what we discussed, and a second from Ms. McKenney. Any more discussion about it? Hearing none, let's move to the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie's. Um, Susan, any nominations tonight?
Nope.
Okay.
I'm getting close on the preschool one, and I, we do have quite a few, and there's, uh, there's, there's some that, there's circumstances. Uh, like last year, we lost, uh, you know, a Mandarin candidate.
Right.
Because of the delay.
Yep.
We did wind up with an excellent one, but, um, unfortunately, she, uh, she was not able to get through the lottery process to renew a visa, so we're gonna be looking for another one. We're very sad she was, she was a good teacher.
Well, with that, um, our next scheduled meeting is April fifteenth at five P.M. We will, I will meet with Susan and get back to the board about the retreat dates. We can get those on the calendar. Um, the next meeting, we'll talk about the, the result of the task force, as well as look at the calendar one more time for approval. With that, I seek a motion to adjourn the meeting at seven-oh-five.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion from Ms. McKenney and a second from Mr. Swanson to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor, say aye. Meeting adjourned.